Councilmember Bright Cruz.
Here.
Councilmember Jablonski.
Here.
Vice Mayor Fisickelli.
Here.
Mayor McKay.
Here. If everybody would please stand for the Pledge of Allegiance, thank you.
A pledge of allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, to the Trump presidency, which stands one day under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Public comment, who wants to read that, or do we need to?
We have a public, who wants to come?
Yes.
Anybody you'd like to speak, if you haven't filled out a form, come up and fill one out and speak, or speak and fill one out afterwards.
All right, we have two, Noel Hollingsworth.
Good evening, Noel Hollingsworth, 199th Avenue. This morning at nine o'clock, when the town opened, I called Sandy because bulk was not picked up on 199th yesterday. They came by this morning at about 9:30, as I was talking to Sandy, and picked up bulk. That's not acceptable. And the truck that came down the street was really a raggedy, ragtag truck this time, even more than the normal raggedy ragtag truck that they have with the brand-new rake on it. So, I think that it's, this is two times in a row. Sandy said that there was hydraulic problems, but they're a large company, they can get other trucks, they have trucks in reserve, I think. But, yesterday also, when the garbage came down, picked up, besides them being very raggedy-looking trucks, both of them said proudly, "Serving St. Lucie County." I didn't know we had moved. So, I'd like someone to start looking at the contract and put the penalties into effect. And also have them learn what a rake is for, and that brand-new rake on the truck, maybe we could get some use out of it before they trash the truck completely. Thank you.
Next up is David Kozinski.
David Kozinski, 6411 Holliday Trail. Sorry, I missed the last meeting that day, my father had passed away, and I just want to express gratitude and thanks to everyone who sent me cards, and your condolences touched my heart, and just ask everybody to just lead healthy lifestyles. If you know people that are smoking, try to get them to quit, that was the main cause of my father's demise and his health. Thanks.
Anyone else? Is that the final speaker?
Uh, yes, it is, ma'am.
Okay. And would anybody else like to have any public comment? Come on up. Afterwards, you could fill the form out, or just hand the form to them.
Hello, everyone. I'm Omar Khan, me and my dad are here from Khan's Nursery, and we've been, come to attention by Mr. John Eastman about some of the draft revisions as far as us parking trucks and so forth on our property. And I know he had indicated that there's a lot of people subletting and stuff like that, and we don't do that. So, I would like to know based on, you know, there's a lot of jargon in the draft, as far as what type of revision of the order, and it says, are you guys, are we going to get penalized for parking our own trucks and trailers on our property, or, I would like to know what the situation with that is?
I would tell you that's still an ongoing discussion, it's going to be back at the Comp Plan Board, when's that Comp Plan Board next meeting?
I think it's the first Wednesday, Thursday?
Third Thursday.
Sixteenth.
Sixteenth, so you'll want to come to that meeting. It'll be here at Town Hall, but probably in the room over there. If it's a bigger meeting, it might be in this room. But that's an ongoing discussion, we haven't made any decisions or final decisions yet.
Okay.
So, we're still airing that out. Anybody else want any additional input here on this?
No, I think that's exactly right, we want to hear both sides, so it would be great if you could be there.
Well, operating on, we operate on 5425 to 10 Terrace and 5225 to 10 Terrace, and just to let you guys know, like, anytime there's an accident on 27, and even when there's not an accident on 27, that road is, there's tractor-trailers coming through that road all the time, you know?
Going to that car auction, probably.
Well, that's sterling there.
Yeah.
But even when they're not, for some reason, I don't know, they're cutting through there, and they're destroying the road all the time, out there. And, you know, and I kind of feel that we should be able to park our-
Where they, you have any idea where they're going to?
I have a feeling sometimes they just divert the traffic, sometimes if there's an accident, I mean, these are huge 53 containment foot containers coming through, and it's, it would be, I feel in a way unfair to-
Get Andy Burns' card, the administrator on the end here, before you leave this evening.
Okay.
And on a scenario like that, I'd call him and he'll send the police-
No, no, I know, I understand that there's nothing that we can do in that sense, but to tell the residents that own property there that we can't park it after 3:50?
We're not doing that yet, so don't worry about it.
Okay.
It is a, what is it we have in play right now with the nursery, what's it called? A moratorium?
Zoning in progress.
We have zoning in progress, moratorium things, until we adjust or try to fix some stuff. But we have some laws on the books we're not enforcing, and we have other laws that we think we should do, so we're being real careful not to step on toes and different things like that.
Okay.
So, nothing's been decided yet, as I said, it's going to go back to the Comp Plan Board, please come and attend that, and you'll be allowed to have input.
Okay, and that's on the sixteenth?
On the sixteenth. You can call here at Town Hall, it should be on the bulletin board in the lobby there.
One week from tonight.
Okay, we'll be here. Okay, thanks, guys.
Seven o'clock.
All right.
Anybody else want to come on up? Come on up. Come on up.
Mike Hanley, 205 Avenue. With the permission of the mayor and Andy, I don't know if I should discuss this tonight, but I made a-
Not what we talked about earlier.
No, that's what-
Andy's going to talk to you privately.
The rest of the residents would like to know about it, or if you wanted me to wait until you, that you were looking into it.
I'll address it, I'll address it in council member comment.
Okay.
Okay, but Andy's here, if you want to go chat with him, he'll bring you up to speed real quick.
Now, or later?
Uh, I don't know, ask him.
Huh?
Yeah.
I just would think it would be of interest to the rest of the residents to know what transpired.
Yeah, yeah, we'll share it in a lightly way, there's more to it, we've learned more to it since we spoke to you.
Than when I spoke to you?
Yes.
Okay.
So.
Thank you, Mayor.
Shirley. Anyone else? Seeing no additional public comment, public comment is closed. All right, board reports, any board reports? All right. Seeing no board reports, well, council member comments. Who wants to go first? All right, Gary, go ahead.
Thank you, Mayor, thank you everybody for coming, just a few public announcements I'd like to make, one is, we've got our budget workshop on the 21st of August, which is 7:00 PM here in the council chambers, it's a Tuesday night, and then we have the Parks Board bingo at the barn on the 11th, that's his coming, tickets are available here at Town Hall or at the door of the barn. Dinner starts at 6:00. Property appraiser outreach is on the 20th, Monday, from 11:30 to 1:00 PM, if you have any questions on that, you can meet with personnel from Marty Care's office. All important, we have hazmat at the barn on the 8th of September, and you'll hear me say this every meeting until the 8th, from 8:00 to 2:00, and there'll be shredding available at that time. I urge everybody to get rid of your old paint cans, tires, and dispose of your electronics properly, you know, at that. Okay, that's the interesting stuff, the calendar stuff. Couple items of note, I had a lot of balloons in the air with a lot of stuff I wanted to talk about, and a gentleman at the end of the dais took all the air out of them, and said, "We got to talk to legal," so there, I'm going to come back to you with some stuff. So, he took all my marbles and went home.
Don't feel alone, the same thing happened to me.
So, uh-
Me too.
So, I didn't want to let him entirely off the hook, but, you know, in a humorous way, he kind of, he kind of, he needs to double-check a few things for me, and I'll be bringing some stuff back, that's germane. One thing I want to mention, and I briefly discussed with Andy, and I'm having a real problem with the alphabet, and it's dealing with our zones for bulk pickup, and I'd like to see that entertained, possibly changing that, because I can never remember if I'm A or B, because matter's the dividing line. So, one side of the street is one side, and, you know, and the other, and it could be a little problematic. Andy and I talked about it, and I think he's coming up with a plan, but I just wanted to get it on the record, that I think that might be part of our bulk pickup problem in some small way, I'm not 100% yet, but I think we can work on that. I'd rather see something like zone 1, 2, 3, 4, 5, 6, as opposed to 2A, 2B, you know, that sort of thing, because people, it is a little bit confusing, I know, I have to look at the calendar all the time, and I have gotten it wrong once or twice, and, you know, and it's-
At least you didn't get a ticket.
I got a warning. I got a warning, I dragged the whole pile back into my property, and waited three days, waited a week, and then dragged it back out. Hey, things happen, you know, stuff like that. So, anyway, I'll conclude with all that, turn, anybody else want to make any comments?
All right, who'd like to go next?
I'll go.
Go ahead.
Two comments, the first one is, I did want to touch on the Waste Pro issue as well. I do think that, you know, there was a rough start at first, I thought that they have improved, but it does seem like recently the service is deteriorating again, so actually I sent a note to Andy earlier today to see what we can do to start taking advantage some of the elements we put in the contract for penalties, because they just need to know that this is not acceptable. I know, Noel, I'm glad yours was picked up, mine is still waiting at the side of the road, so, I mean, that's just not, it's not good, it's not right, so, it's not what we're paying for. So, I don't want to go crazy, but I want them to know that what their, the current level of service is not acceptable. The other thing that I wanted to touch on, and I'll be touching on this probably every council member between now and the election, every council-
Meeting.
Meeting between now and the election, is I do want to encourage everybody to vote for the two charter amendments that are coming on the ballot this time. They are key for us to be able to retain our rural lifestyle. They are designed to make it more difficult to turn our open spaces into commercial entities, which almost happened earlier, and about a year ago, and so we want to avoid that, I believe, and we also want to avoid, to make it more difficult for properties on some of the major roads, such as Griffin, from being turned into, have the zoning changed into commercial, and potentially having Griffin Road look something like 441 in Hollywood eventually, you know, that's just not, it's not good for the town, it's not who we are, and this is a great opportunity for our town, to be able to kind of nail that down, and make sure that unless it's agreed to by all of the council members and the residents, that those kinds of things just aren't going to happen. So, I would encourage you to vote for both of those charter amendments, and help preserve our rural lifestyle. Thank you. Do you?
Good evening, and thank you all for coming out. I only have a couple of things I would like to discuss, one is the amendments that are on the ballot. I feel no is a better answer than to vote yes for them, and my reason is, overkill is overkill. It's always been, wherever you want, majority rules. If you have seven people and you get four votes, you get to win. It's like that with kids' games, whoever has the most wins. We also have a super majority, where we have to have four votes, that's enough. The 5-0, I feel infringes on your rights as far as being able to say what you want in your town. We talk about rural communities, I did some research. Mr. Google is a great gift, he tells you everything you want to know. And Mr. Google says, "A rural area," and I want to see the definition, when we incorporated, I want to see the definition that we came up with, rural. Do I like what we have? I've liked it since the 80s, and I wish, more than anything, we could freeze time from that day on. None of us wanted to become incorporated, we knew where it was going to go, and I don't think any of us like it. Could we go back in time? I don't know, is there a way to get back there? Because if we could, let's try to do it. But a rural area is something, an area outside a city or a town. Everyone has their own lifestyle. I had a lady come to me the other day on my street, and she said, "Why do I have to live a rural lifestyle? Who told me I have to do that?" And I said, "Well, you don't." You know, this is, it's a rural area, is what they're saying. It's not like downtown Fort Lauderdale or Hollywood. This is something that I don't think there's anybody in this town that would want to even come close to seeing that. I know I wouldn't, I'd have to move. I'd have to go further north or further west, because I don't want to live in that. But I don't want to raise taxes either, and you're going to have to start thinking outside the box where your monies are coming from. I did do a little research, I talked to our finance department, and I pulled up just three things. I don't know what the average taxes are per home for the town, I haven't gone that far yet, but just between Lowe's, Publix, and Walgreens, we're talking 130-some thousand dollars a year. That's just not chump change. And I remember when Walgreens was going to come in, it was like, "Ooh, a Walgreens." You know, what is that going to bring here? Well, it brought money. But we were allowed to set our own rules, we were allowed to say, "We don't want an all-night pharmacy." What do they have in Walgreens late at night when they have an all-night pharmacy? They have narcotics and drugs, and that just brings in people that maybe we don't want in our town at 2:00 in the morning. So, you have to think of other avenues. We do have a lot of mega homes going in, and they're going to be paying big taxes. But in those taxes, most of that money goes to the county. And if the county doesn't get the money, what do they do to us? They raise our taxes. I had the finance department pull up just the ag exemptions in the town, it's $966,000. That's a lot of money. We could put that into infrastructure somewhere. That's a lot of money. That's not just nothing to sneeze at. I guess if you're talking $15,000 in taxes for a home, it's not that much. But when you're talking, excuse me for a minute. We have over 3,000 parcels in this town, and 480, I believe it was 3,300 and something, 480 of those 3,300 parcels are ag exemption. Now, correct me if I'm wrong, when you get your ag exemption, we had set it up, and I'm not sure about this, so I'm asking, that you must have a dumpster on your property. Is this correct? If you're ag exemption.
I think it is. Sandy might know the answer to that, would you Sandy, or no?
Before Sandy comes up.
Okay.
It really, it depends on the application, in some cases, we do have ag properties that, we're in the process of researching now, that are putting out excessive amounts of bulk or solid waste, and in those cases, because if there's ag on the property, then they are recognized agricultural business, that's how they got that discount, so those properties should have a dumpster, and so we're working on, in some cases, we've got some large-scale offenders in those cases, where they do not have a commercial dumpster, so staff is working on that project to get those things in place, if that, Councilor, I'm trying to answer your question.
Now, I'm aware, I'm going to join in just a minute here, because I was in Sandy's office a couple of weeks ago, and some people have been here for, I don't know, 18 or 20 years, I guess, and have never had a dumpster before, and yet they're running a business or a horse trade class or whatever they're running, and they've never had one, and weren't aware they needed to get one, and the comment was, "Well, you've been getting away with it for 18 years now, and now it's time to step up, we've got up to you, and you're required to have one, and you need one." So, you know, they complained a little bit, but I think they got it done, did they not, if I recall? Okay, so anyhow, so quite a few people were learning, should have dumpsters, that don't have dumpster, who's not gotten away with it all this time, so they're not real happy to learn that they're required to have one now, but-
Well, I didn't know if it was just like a tree nursery, or, you know, if it was all ag exemption, I wasn't sure on that.
I don't know the affirmative answer to that.
We're actually looking at all of the ag properties, what we're trying to do is identify the greatest offenders in those cases, because obviously, if somebody is a commercial property, an agricultural property, they are running a for-profit business, or at least attempting, based on the definition and the property appraisers requirement, they're attempting to run a profitable business. In those cases, if they're putting out excessive amounts of debris, that has a negative impact, obviously that cost has to be borne somewhere, and that cost winds up being passed along to the residents. So, in those cases where it is a commercial agricultural business, staff is trying to catch up to those, to require them to have that dumpster, so that our residential tipping costs, disposal costs, can hopefully be reduced in the future.
I guess what I'm trying to say is just be careful of what you wish for, you know, sometimes those things can also hurt you. We do have the right to critique and set what we want in this town if we decide on commercial, as far as Griffin, I've given that a lot of thought. And that just, I'm on board, I'm on board with that one. You know, it's our main entrance into town, and I kind of like the way it looks, you know, I wouldn't want to see it look like 441 or even, even, even any close to that. I like it. But we do have a lot of other roads where we can put stuff in, and we can control it, we can control what goes in there. You know, to come back and say, "Well, what if they go out of business?" You know, what if is such a big thing, "Well, what if this happens? Well, what if that happens?" You know, you can't go on what ifs, you try to get something solid, to be put into place where we have control of it, and we tell what we want, if we don't want dry cleaning places, or smoke shops, or whatever, we have the right to decide that. So, you're not really winning, or you're not really losing, because at the end of the day, we make the decision that we feel, you know, is in the best interests of, not so much a resident, but for the town itself, for the purpose of keeping this town as rugged looking, and that's basically what rural is, it's rugged, the way Webster and Wikipedia and all them describe rural, it's very rugged, you know, like when you're out west. So, I just want yous to think carefully about that, and like I said, I'm, I am on board with our Griffin Road, that's kind of like our sign. You know, everyone sees it. Whether you get off on it or not, when you're driving down I-75, you see it, there's no doubt in my mind, so, just, like I said, be careful of what you don't want, as well as what you want. Thank you.
All right, Freddie?
I'm good.
You're good, okay. A couple of things I want to discuss, one of the things I want to bring up, and I'm looking for input from the council, because this is an item that is not clarified. We allow people, when they come, to either do a new addition on a house, or build a new house, to park a mobile home or a trailer on-site while they build for a year. I believe we're all on board with that, we don't have an issue. The problem that's been happening in some occasions is that people are bringing their trailer or their mobile home on-site, they do not have plans yet, they don't have a permit yet, and they're living on their trailer on the site while they go through the process to get plans done, to do the whole process, and that's, you know, three, four, five, could be six months. And then, the ticker does not start running on the year for the RV or the trailer on the site till a building permit is issued. So, what I would like us to do is clarify that for staff and for CAP, and state that you cannot put an RV or a trailer on-site till which time you have a building permit. So, I would hope you guys would be on board with that, otherwise it could just drag on and on, and then what happens is, then they got to keep their permits live along the way, so it's a, in some cases in town, it's a game. And we've got somebody who's had a trailer on a location for, I think at least two years now, and their permit, and I was asking Andy about it, he says, "Doug, he says, 'They didn't get a permit till January of last year.'" I said, "They have till January of next year?" Wow, so they're going to have a trailer for two and a half years or more on-site, so they're getting to live in an RV on a town property, and I'm not so sure if we want, we want that for any length of time. I think Andy has the authority, that if they're doing the right thing, get the permit at the right time, and they're moving along with their house, and they only have a little ways to go, that he has the ability to extend the permit. But I'd like to see us clarify for them that you can't bring a permit on, a RV or trailer to live in on-site till which time you have a permit issued, so I'm looking for you guys' input on that, related to that.
I'll chime in here for a second.
Okay.
The situation you're describing, I thought you couldn't do that until you did actually have a permit in hand. I mean, you could might, maybe park something out there for, you know, a week or two to stage it, but not to have, you know, not to live in it.
Right.
So, I'm kind of-
I thought exactly the same thing.
I'm kind of shocked, a little bit shocked.
I thought the same thing, but it's not clear, so that's why we need to clear it up, but-
Is it not clear? I mean, is that, is it not clear?
There's one specific incidence where we had this problem.
No, I'm not talking about the incident, I'm talking about the law.
Robert, can I ask you to speak to what's in the code right now?
So, I think what happened here, if I understand correctly, is that it's really a function of reactive code enforcement, right? The trailer was out there, nobody complained, for however long, and then they started the construction, and somebody at that point said, "Hey, that trailer's been out there a long time," and they complained, and by then, there was already a permit, and there was nothing we could do for a little bit longer. But this is a function of reactive versus proactive, we don't need to change the law, the law is already there, it's just nobody complained. That's the way I understand it, correctly.
And that is correct, the law is there, you're only allowed to have a living trailer, a trailer to live on, the property, if you have an active building permit for a year. There's a possibility of an extension, which is an administrative decision after that, for another six months, but unless you have that active permit, you're not allowed to have it. Now, if we've received a complaint, which we have received complaints on all the locations, we have acted upon it, and they have removed them. As recently as last month, we received one on 195 Terrace.
It's already there.
Yeah, okay.
All right, so, I guess, so how do we move forward to make sure they don't, go ahead, Andy?
Well, Mayor, let me ask you a question, because as long as you're on the topic.
Sure.
Is this something that you would like to see code enforcement be more proactive with, if it's something they see, or do you want us to wait for a complaint?
I would think in that scenario, you would have that proactive, because that's affecting other residents and neighbors.
I would be comfortable with it, because I don't think, I just don't think it's what we, the direction we want to go.
Right, right. So-
Do we want to do that only for construction sites, or any location?
No, only construction sites.
Any vacant, Mayor, correct me if I'm wrong, because you and I have discussed it privately as well.
Yep.
I think the situation that you want to avoid is, somebody owns vacant property in town, and rather than building a house, they're parking an RV on it and living there prior to even beginning the construction process.
Without question, but the other thing we have in town is, we have people come down, visit people from north, and they come down, and somebody might park in one of our driveways and stay, visit for a month, you know, so I don't want to affect-
But if you have, if you have a-
We're talking about a primary residence.
Right.
If the primary residence on a piece of property is an RV, and it's no construction, that's illegal. Somebody shows up, and, you know, you run out of bedrooms, staying in your RV for a few weeks, that's life in southwest-
RV for a few weeks, that's, that's life in Southwest Ranches.
Right.
I have, I have a question, as long as you're...
Yes, sir.
What do we, how do you handle a situation where, let's say, a property is in the middle of, or a structure is in the middle of a renovation or, you know, God forbid, a fire or flood or something like that and they can't live in that building, but they can hook up, you know, an RV or something close by, how do we treat that?
We have had a situation out of, on 190th where the house burned down and there was no way for them to live anywhere and we had to allow them for a while to live in, out of the trailer while the house was being built or rebuilt, but they had a permit.
Okay.
Same thing.
All right.
So, I would say proactive on construction issues related to the trailers.
I'm comfortable with that.
Or vacant properties with an RV.
Yeah, vacant properties or, or...
Or make sure they're, they're in the building process.
Because it's not really construction because in this case, the construction hasn't started yet, no permit has been pulled, it's just, it's just a vacant property with an RV.
But where, where do you divide that? It's their property, they own it and they put there, which is registered to them, their motorhome on it to live in, how, how do we stop people from doing that?
We don't allow it. It's already illegal. It's already illegal. It's just a matter of whether it's being enforced or not.
Yeah, our code is very specific, councilman, councilmember, we do not allow people living out of trailers, not even on a single-family residence location. You may have a trailer on a single-family location where people are trying to live out of it and that is also illegal under our code.
Okay, another question, when they hook these up, and, and I'm only asking this because I know personally, I, I have an RV, where does all the waste go?
They are required to get a permit from the health department to hook up to the septic tank that they should have established and they will have temporary electrical, which is also another permit, which will then acquire with the building department.
So, are both of those required?
Yes.
So, if there's construction sites right now that are not hooked up to the septic or hooked up to electric, they are considered illegal?
That is required, but at the same time, they could have a temporary disposal method, which is allowed as well, as part of the trailer.
Yeah, because...
You referring to having someone to come pump it out?
Correct.
You're talking about pumping that out every couple of days?
Right.
Yeah? Which can get expensive.
True.
Okay, thank you.
You're welcome.
All right, go ahead, we clear?
Yeah.
All right, awesome, thank you, appreciate it, thanks gentlemen. So, the other issue is on the ballot, the 5-0 vote on both items, I personally am not in favor of it, I think it puts handcuffs on this council, I think it allows one person to stop anything, even, you know, their group or their neighborhood, it may be good for the town, but that neighborhood may not just like it, whomever it might be, but it could be good for the town. And so, you're going to allow one person to stop anything, I, I just don't think that's the right thing to do. I don't have any issue with the supermajority like it is now on, on one of them, the other one is not a supermajority, I wouldn't have an issue changing that at a later date, but not at this time, they want it 5-0, I don't have an issue in modifying it two years on the ballot to make that a supermajority also. But 5-0 on either one of those, I think, is a little overboard to say the least, so, I would plead you to vote no on those two items, so, and then, just as an update, those of you that don't know, we have one open seat, we have two residents running, one is Bob Hartman, the other one is John Eastman, so I just wanted to know, those of you that don't know or didn't know, you know now, so, we appreciate your participation. All right, let's go on to the next, I'm done. Legal, legal comment, no, yeah, legal comment, you're up.
Thank you, Mayor. Going to announce that we're going to have a shade session for case number CACE 15-008766, which is the style of the cases, Town of Southwest Ranches, Wesley J. Clark Jr., Amy Clark and Robert Vardeman and Joan Vardeman versus the City of Pembroke Pines, that's going to be held Tuesday, August 21st at 6:00 PM and it'll be held at the Town Hall Conference Room, so against that, that's a shade session for next Tuesday, or Tuesday, August 12th, sorry, Tuesday, August 21st at 6:00 PM.
Awesome, nothing else, that's it?
Oh, that's it, thanks.
Awesome, okay, Andy, I think you're up.
Yeah, Mayor, two things, just to follow up on Mike Hanley's comments before, I did learn a little bit this afternoon, you know, following the phone call, a couple of things that were very critical, there was a situation at a group home out west where, where Mike Hanley had sensed that there was a resident in distress and had gone over there and tried to help out. We had had a very serious accident in town yesterday at Volunteer and Hancock and the officers who were assigned to our town were actually over there covering that, so when the incident happened out west, Davie actually dispatched two other officers from Davie that came over to cover, so they, they weren't necessarily familiar with our town and they were out at their zone trying to provide coverage, so they weren't as involved in it and perhaps didn't handle one of our residents as well as we would have liked them to do that, so I've had a discussion with, with administration on that, police administration on that, so that those things can be handled better. But the, the, the girl that, that you heard and that was in distress was, I, I don't want to say too much, but was having a larger problem than you saw and she was actually turned over to Joe DiMaggio Children's Hospital for her own protection, so they were dealing with a, a much greater incident internally at the time you were there, Mike, I know you were trying to provide assistance, but what you saw was maybe a sliver or a small snapshot of, of some of the other activity that was going on, that I have a little bit more information on that I, I can't disclose publicly, but I, I don't believe that from what you conveyed to me, that, that the management within the home spoke to you or addressed you as, as properly as they should and proper, properly recognized your concern and desire to help, so I do plan to continue to follow up on that and chat with them a little bit further about that as well. And I, I could talk to you after the, I'll talk to you after the meeting a little bit more, Mike, if that's okay with you, rather than go back and forth here. The only other thing I had, Mayor, is just as, as Legal had pointed out, we've got the shade session on the 21st at 6:00 PM, following that, we'll be back in this room on Tuesday, the 21st for our budget workshop and Marty and I are hard at work. At the last council meeting, we established a, a maximum mileage rate, a maximum solid waste fee and a max, maximum fire assessment fee. You all, to various degrees, expressed your concerns with some of those things and certainly urged us to get out the, the sharp knives, Marty and I are continuing to work on that, so we look forward to having a presentation for you, for you all on the 21st so that we can get through the things we need to do, establish a, a reasonable mileage rate and certainly get on with another year of doing the town's business. And last but not least, I, I would apologize to Councilmember Jablonsky for shortening up his report tonight, but I'm really not sympathetic because shortening up his report has actually increased my to-do list.
Yeah.
So, I do have a little bit more work that we're working on. Mayor, actually, one of the issues that I was speaking to the council member about, you actually brought up to me as well, so I, I know it is something that's, that's important to certainly more than one of you and perhaps all five of you, so we'll be working on that when Keith gets back into town, I've got some things I want to bounce off him and, and some of those items will be back for further discussion at that point, so thank you, Mayor.
Okay, awesome. Number eight, approval of minutes.
I approve.
Second.
Okay, any public comment on minutes, we've been corrected before. See, none public comment is closed, back to us, any corrections or any add-ons for us? No? Call the question, please.
Councilmember Schroeder?
Yes.
Councilmember Bright Cruz?
Yes.
Councilmember Jablonsky?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Fisickelli?
Yes.
Mayor McKay?
Yes.
Motion to adjourn.
Okay, motion to adjourn.
I'll take it.